All right, we're good. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 12th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence to recognize the sacrifice of those that service to the country and those who have died in conflict. Thank you. Any public comment, Kathy? Nope, all right. We'll just jump right over to communications correspondence. Oh, I'm sorry, minutes, we'll do minutes. Motion on to approve the minutes of Wednesday, March 22nd and Monday, March 27th.
No motion.
Any discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, communications. We have a letter in here from Alan Slaven, who's the District Four Representative for Plymouth County, Cape and the Islands, through the Mass Municipal Board of Directors, Local Government Advisory Commission, just offering his availability to help us out with any issues that we wanted to raise to the Governor's Council through the Local Government Advisory Commission. Anyone else have any other correspondence communication?
No.
Okay. Jump to new business. Letter resignation from the Board of Assessors from Sheldon Holzer due to health issues.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation with regrets and write.
I'll second that motion.
Issues to him.
Yeah. Okay. Motion is made, there's a second, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Have the approval and execution of the Order of Betterment Assessment for Jonas Drive, Valerie Circle, and Rochelle Court.
Mr. Chairman, there was an update on that that you didn't get in your package for most of the year.
Just me, huh?
Yeah.
Right, okay. I picked it up early. I picked it up when you left it out for me. All right, so the amended Order of Betterment Assessment.
The price went down.
I know that there was a difference because of the way it had to be processed.
Okay, the total cost of the road improvements, $268,175.18 proportionally distributed, lot on are at a price of $10,314,043. Is there a motion to execute?
No motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
It's done. Sign that before we leave. Anyone else have any other new business? All right. Then let's just jump in, you were a couple of minutes early. Let's jump into our 6:40 appointment, approval of a couple of applications, first of which is Mashpee Commons Special Event Schedule. Number of events, looks like a pretty robust schedule. Mary, do you want to speak to this?
We have a very full schedule this year. Most of it's similar to things we've done in years past. One event that's slightly different is the Sidewalk Festivals. And that event is kind of combining the sidewalk sales with block party event, in that the merchants will still have setups outside of their businesses with promotional items, but additionally, we will have some entertainment sprinkled throughout the commons such as live music, street performers, maybe some jugglers, magicians, things like that, and a bouncy house for the kids. So, kind of scaling back what the block parties were a little bit, we had a large stage and a beer garden, they've become kind of robust, we're going to, but it was kind of centered in one area, so we're going to kind of scale that back and sprinkle that activity throughout Mashpee Commons and combine it with the sidewalk sales. That's what the Sidewalk Festivals are. We have a handful of events on there that are...
I just want to ask one question because I just heard the town is not using bouncy houses. Was that because of a law or a regulation?
Because of our insurance.
Okay.
Myers said no.
They probably have better insurance.
I know that Myers said no, so I said no.
I just wanted to make sure that it was still legal.
Not for us.
Sorry about that.
You should check into that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I will check into that, yeah.
They were very specific.
The company we work with, we do hire an attendant, and they're with it the whole time, because that was one thing I had a concern with early on, is just setting it up and walking away. So, the company we've been working with for the past several years, they bring somebody with them that is specifically there to keep an eye on the bouncy house and the kids coming and going, which makes me feel a little bit more comfortable with it, but I'll definitely check into that as well, just to make sure. And I'll check with our insurance agent, just to make sure it's not something out of line. There's definitely other things we could do for kids outside of a bouncy house if it's too much of a liability.
I just, I knew we had canceled ours, that's why, and I don't know why.
Yeah, I know, that's a good point, John, thank you.
Now, none of these events you need a liquor license for, a day license or anything?
No. One of the events, or a few of the events on here that are not coordinated by us but are taking place in Mashpee Commons, like the La Tavola and the Knockabout Road Race after-party, they will need a liquor license of some sort, but they will be coming, coming back to you directly with all of that.
Okay, so the approval of this schedule doesn't leave them of their obligations to get...
No, not at all. Yeah, they're still responsible for getting all of those licenses in order, yes.
I make a motion to approve 2017 Mashpee Commons Special Event Schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck with them all.
Looks like a busy summer.
Sorry.
Loving Life 5K event. Hi, come on up.
Hi, Corinne Wickel. I am here representing Life for our eighth annual Loving Life 5K, which is going to be taking place on May 7th this year. It's basically from 9:00 to noon, and everything's from the previous years is the same.
No changes.
No changes. I think the only, Ian had said the only change was the, just notification of where the signs are going to be placed. We have eight locations.
Make a motion that we grant the license or permit to have the Life 7K.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, good luck.
So, are you running?
I run it.
Are you?
I don't run it.
I may run.
No, it's open to runners and walkers.
It comes right by your house. I just started running again, so...
You can walk.
Thank you. You've seen me run, obviously.
Thank you.
After the rock race, so I don't know if I'll be walking by then.
All right. Deb, you're on, we're a little early, but Town Clerk has four items for us.
Actually, the first item on the list is with the financial team on the ballot question.
Yes. Well, I asked the, I figured, you know, you'd put this issue before us, and I asked the finance team to be here, so we could have a discussion if the board wanted to have one about implications of pursuing that question the way it's proposed or not.
All right. So, at this time, all I would ask is that the board vote to add this to the ballot?
Okay. So, the question before us tonight is question one on the proposed ballot, which would be recommend, or a question that we put before the voters to exempt from Two and a Half for, on a debt exclusion basis, the cost of the bonds to be issued to replace, repair, and restore the Quashnet School roof and windows. And, so, anyway, we've talked about numerous times this project, the need to identify funding source. I think the recommendation is that we do it outside Two and a Half through a debt exclusion. And I had a discussion with the finance team last week about what our capacity inside Two and a Half was with debt coming off and potentially, you know, the meals tax piece and what we were doing, and their recommendation comment was that we probably could not within Two and a Half finance this project. And I asked them to be here, so, not my word saying that, but if anybody wanted to have a conversation about that prior to making a decision on this, but we do need to decide it tonight, so if anybody has any questions, they're here.
Does this go on the town meeting and then on the...
The question, the article authorizes the debt, not contingent on a debt exclusion. So, right?
No.
Does it say debt exclusion?
That's why they're here.
Both the article for town meeting as well as the ballot question will specify, yes, and it will need a two-thirds vote for both town meeting and the ballot.
So, with that, is there an explanation that would go with this?
Not on this.
As far as...
It will be on the ballot.
On the ballot?
Oh, yeah.
There'll be a lengthy...
And there'll be one at the town, at the town meeting.
At the town meeting, that's what I'm saying. There has to be an explanation, because if you read this, people inside Two and a Half or outside Two and a Half?
A lot of people don't understand.
They're not...
Sorry.
So, at town meeting, this question will be at the town meeting?
Correct.
So, I'm assuming there'll be an explanation explaining inside, outside, Two and a Half, what that...
I would, yes, in the warrant, and...
Okay.
And we can explain it if you'd like us to give a brief explanation as far as what it...
We want it on, we want it on the warrant and the ballot, because people get that early and they can read it themselves and then ask questions.
Yes, it definitely has to be on the ballot, and then we can just put in the explanation for the article itself, that it's going to need both town meeting approval and the ballot, because it can pass at town meeting, but if it fails at the ballot, then, so people need to know that they...
So, we're being asked to execute this election ballot tonight. Deb, were you contemplating an explanation underneath this?
I can, I can add that.
You can add that?
Yeah.
So, we can execute the question and you can add the explanation.
Have we got a figure on this?
The figure would be done at town meeting.
The figure is going to be done at town meeting, the figure is going to be the estimated amount of the total project, because you have to...
What about the ballot question?
The same with the ballot question, because you have to authorize the whole borrowing.
Do you have that figure yet?
I've been told it's been about $10.5 million. And then you have the MSBA reimbursement, so you're not bonding the whole...
Well, that's, that I imagine will be in the explanation, that's what I was saying.
So, the explanation will say that, the question itself will not. The language in the question that's in front of us today is the language in the question.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
Deb, right?
So, just so...
Question's about 5.8.
Yeah, but we were talking about explaining to a person.
Yep, yep. The explanation of the borrowing and how we use it, but, so, have we made a determination as to how we're going to fund this and who's going to do this job, or are we just going with the SBA, the state funding, and they're going to take this job for the $10 million, and we'll get the reimbursement?
We're still going to the bidding process.
We are going to go up.
We still have to do this.
But, right, we, no matter where, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
My only concern is making sure that the explanation is spelled out.
Right. In layman's terms, very simple to understand where we're going with this. Is that, is that, that's correct?
Yeah.
All right.
I guess Dawn and I, the chairman asked us to put together some pros and cons of inside and outside Prop Two and a Half. So, Dawn and I did that, and basically, if you go outside Prop Two and a Half, you're not constrained by the levy limit. The other side of it is that the services are able to be retained with the debt payment. So, if you have, you know, if you put it inside the levy limit, you could be, end up cutting services to pay your debt, because you can't raise above Prop Two and a Half.
That's why we need to put it...
So, that's, that's a real good reason. The other reason is that the debt is temporary. As you can see, the, the school is coming off the debt schedule, and so that's about a 10-cent decrease right now after the MSBA reimbursement. And so, you know, you want your, in an ideal world with debt, you want your debt to be about even. You don't want to drop and fluctuate, because what happens is when your debt fluctuates, you start to use up your levy limit for any kind of debt and your tax rate. You start to use up your levy limit for overriding, or operating, and your levies and your tax rate starts to fluctuate greatly. We're going to have a little bit of that, because we're not going to be able to get this MSBA or the Quashnet School onto the debt schedule before the high school has expired.
How many years is the bond?
I'm anticipating the bond to be 20. We can go 30, but to be honest with you, I wouldn't want to go 30, because...
I'm not asking to make a, I'm sure you'd make the right decision.
Yeah, the longer you go, the more interest you expend, and...
It's one of the things that you have to explain to a person, that on the Two and a Half, is this isn't forever, it's for 20 years or 30 years.
Yeah, and I want to go 20 years. For the amount of, based on my schedule, if you go 30 years, you save yourself about $40,000 a year, which is less than 10% of the payment, and you're paying about $1 million worth of more of interest over the life of the bond. I see no point in going 30 years.
Just a question off the top of my head is, how much does our AAA rating come into effect in here, does it help us?
Obviously, yeah, obviously it helps us, the, you know...
On your rate?
Excuse me?
Will it help you on your rate?
Oh, absolutely. It's going to have, you know, 20 to 30 basis points, I would imagine, is what I've always heard in the past.
That could be a lot of difference in money, too.
Yeah, especially, I mean, I'm planning on rolling this bond into, with other betterment bonds, and if the, if there's a $1.5 million bond that goes through as well for roads. So, I mean, I'm going to combine this bond with other bonds to make it a large issue. And it goes by the size of the bond, the market condition at the time, and your rating.
I'm thinking more in terms of the average for us in the resident out there doesn't realize that because of our AAA rating, this is not going to cost as much as it could, because you can't put in an explanation, but you're going to need every advantage you can to tell the person, we should be doing this.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's just a...
We're putting debt on, but we're also taking it off.
Yeah, it's, it's school debt, and I think it's got a good, good contingency for it.
One last thing, just as far as, again, in the explanation, if you can have it, like you just said, pros and cons, a yes vote means, you know, these are the benefits, just spell that, I've seen so many times that, I read it in years past, that...
You don't know what yes means?
People are just guessing yes or no, and...
The biggest, the biggest issue with explanation is making it short enough to make it make sense, but not so long that you bore them out of their tears.
You get it. Exactly my point.
It's, writing is, writing is a craft.
Mr. Chairman.
That would be great.
Rodney.
While you're here, Mr. Treasurer, would you mind briefing the board relative to the solar panels?
Yeah. So, I saw the article last week in the Enterprise about the solar panels, and I sent an email and have spoken to the Assistant Town Manager and Mrs. Thayer. So, I contacted our bond council and our financial advisor, because this is a very hot topic right now in the bonding field, and there are some items to consider with the solar projects. First of all, the bonds, or a portion of the bonds issued to finance a project could be considered taxable, because you have a private company using panels on the top of a public building. So, local and state bonds are issued tax exempt to purchaser as permitted by IRS law. So, when I, if I want to invest in, or if John Taxpayer wants to invest in Town of Mashpee Bonds, they get a benefit of having that interest that the Town of Mashpee pays to them as tax-free on their income taxes. So, if we have to, the tax exempt status causes the local municipality to pay a lower interest rate to the buyer of the bond. If a portion of all the, all, or some of the bond is taxable, we're going to end up paying a higher interest rate, which would be, I estimate, 2% to 3%.
The solar has nothing to do with what, as I understand it. The solar's a whole different item on the roof and the...
Would it be that it were that simple?
The IRS does not see it that way.
Pardon me?
The IRS does not see it that way.
What if we just forget we even said solar and wait until it's on the, on the building?
Then if the IRS sees it, they will reopen the issue and fine us.
Is that, but is that if they take, if they take ownership, but if we acquire, because I know there's, there's, there's both, I don't know how many, but there's a lot of options to acquire the solar, and I know there's a lot, this is like a big can of worms. But if we acquired it and took the solar credits ourselves and paid for the solar panels, is that not the case of what you're saying? Or could I be correct?
The issue is going to be that we don't have all the facts right now.
Okay.
As far as how it goes, and you could be right, but the idea is that you've got to have, it's something to consider in your, in...
The thing we're going to have to watch out for is the solar credits are valuable and that they're tax credits, and we can't avail ourselves of the tax credits, because we don't pay federal taxes. So, the whole reason you get somebody in them is you flip it to them, they sell the tax credits, but once we do that, then it tips our, it potentially tips our tax credit status off on the taxable nature of the bond. So, I think it was very useful, you know, Craig brought it up when we met last week, Rodney wanted him to bring it up to us, not to throw the brakes on this project, but just to put a little bit of a flashing yellow light, that as we go through this discussion, there's going to be some really hard issues to work out, and we have to see how the dollars and cents work out, whether, you know, you lose money, if the taxable status of the bonds costs you more than the revenue from the thing, then you'd say, well, maybe we don't do it, or it might work, we have to see how the numbers work out. So, it was just giving us a dose of caution.
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying exactly that, just...
And it's a little further down the road, anyway.
Yeah, you know, MSBA is not going to reimburse, if you have to spend extra money to get the roof reinforced for solar panels, they're not going to pay for it. So, you know, it's just word of caution. It's not, it's in, it's in the logistics.
If the building had been built and paid for, it wouldn't be an issue, because it's a new issue, a new bond issue, it becomes a hazard that we have to figure out.
It is built and paid for now.
Yeah, but you wouldn't want to put solar panels on that roof.
We, we went through this with the refunding with the high school, you know, there are solar panels on top of there, they, bond council asked us all sorts of questions and determined if it was going to affect the issue at that point, it did not, but, you know, it's, it's very much a hot topic within municipal bonding, and, you know, I don't expect any of, anybody or layman's to understand that, but it raised my eyebrows.
It was a good catch on your part, and thank you for raising it early before we got wedded to the notion that we were going to have all this money and then break his heart. All right. So, I think we've had all the discussion on question one. Is there a motion to include question one as proposed on the...
No motion. No motion.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
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 All right. Second issue, Deb, is the discussion of the start time for the annual election. I will say from the start, John and I are going to recuse ourselves from this conversation on advice of council, since we're on the ballot. So, I'm going to turn it over to you three. Talk to Deb.
All right.
Deb.
So, it occurred to me that, you know, with school in session on May, May 16th, that perhaps if we opened up the polling place after school got settled in, that some of the startup problems that we encounter with buses and parents dropping off their children, that if we started at 10 o'clock, we would avoid that. So, it is up to the board. You set the, the time, because this is a local election, and under Mass General Law 5464, you have that option of setting the time. If you want to keep it at 7:00 AM, absolutely fine. It's not a problem with me. It was just a thought that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, that if we opened up later after school started, that we wouldn't...
Debbie, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I don't, if we want to think about this maybe for the next election, I don't think we should do it for this one.
That's fine.
And if it's going to disrupt the school that much, why don't we think about going back on Saturdays? If Tuesdays becomes a problem, you know, that, I mean, I like Tuesdays, and I like it at 7:00. There's a lot of people that come out and vote early that travel off Cape.
We have had, we did see a higher turnout on a Tuesday election.
I understand that.
But it is the select, you know, absolutely, if the selectmen...
My, my census is I like it at 7:00.
I have a question. Did the school...
They don't know about this.
They don't know about...
So, they haven't come to you with concerns about...
Well, there's always concerns, and usually it's on Election Day, when the kids, the parents are bringing the kids in. That being said, I thought maybe, but if the, the selectmen want to have a conversation about moving back to Saturday, that's fine also.
I, I, I just, maybe think about this maybe down the road, but not for this election. I don't think we should change anything.
Right, I agree with you for all the same reasons, that we leave it at 7:00. Too many people commute to Boston, they'll go to work, it's, it wouldn't be fair to them. So, I say keep the hours where they are, and then maybe next year, we can, we can look at changing it back to Saturday, see that, look at that for an option. If there's a problem with the schools, right.
That is, we'd have to have that on the October warrant to change the bylaws.
Okay.
But that's fine.
Great, thanks, Deb.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do you need a vote to change, to set the time, or is it set already?
It's normally set, but if you want to take a vote to retain, you know, keep the hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's fine.
I make a motion to keep the hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM.
8:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, the third question would be the approval of the entire election warrant, yes?
Yes.
Can we vote on that?
It is your ballot, yes.
No, can we? It was me.
Because they're on the election.
Oh, because they're on it?
Oh.
We have.
I know, I always do, too.
I'll make a motion.
We didn't ask about that one. You don't need it, so...
Right, go ahead.
You're still a selectman, you know, there's nothing to, of course you can, right.
All right, is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Make a motion to approve the election warrant.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
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 All right, and lastly, approval to reconvene, you want to talk to us about the bylaw review committee?
The bylaw review committee is in the charter to meet every 10 years. There was no interest, and I tried a few years ago, there's no, there was no interest. However, there are some minor changes that the bylaw review committee could sit down and collectively put together, and so in talking with Ed Larkin, it was decided that we would try and get the bylaw review committee back together. So, we started back in...
How many years has that charter been in now?
13.
It's a dead one.
It was adopted in 2004.
Didn't we have a review?
We had a charter review.
Charter review.
We had changed, right? When was that?
Charter review?
Yeah.
Yeah, last year.
Charter was made, oh, all right, so you're recommending...
So, in accordance with 7-7B, it would be to convene the bylaw review committee. Two members would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and two members would be appointed by the moderator.
Have you spoken to the moderator yet?
And the town clerk.
Have you spoken to the moderator yet?
Yeah, he has his two appointments.
Has he made them?
No. We're waiting for the selectmen to make their appointments, and then I'll...
Something we should do, make a motion that we at least put the charter review, bylaw review committee together, and then they can come and tell us.
I agree with that, second.
So, there's two people who recommend it.
We did advertise, we...
Now, these people who recommended, that's by charter, isn't it?
No.
Oh, this is...
What, the appointments?
Committee, no, I'm talking about the committee is set by charter, right?
Yes.
Who's on it?
Two or... Two are appointed by the moderator.
Well, I'm the only one who has the honor.
That's what I thought. That's set by charter.
Right, yes. And she's gave us two names.
She's the fifth. Philip McHale and Margaret Santos.
Is this set in the charter?
No.
No.
No, there's just two, two people.
What's set in the charter is.
Why, yeah, isn't her open to, what does the charter say?
You advertised already.
We advertised last year.
So.
Beat the bushes.
McHale has a letter saying he's interested, it's in the packet and.
So did Meg.
So did Meg.
So two people showed interest.
So two people showed interest.
So those are the two people that the selectmen would be appointing and.
Wait a minute. You just mentioned Ed Larkin, he did the charter, we're not appointing him?
No. Moderator's appointing him.
Moderator's appointing him.
Moderator has two appointments.
Are you sure he's doing that?
Yeah. I forwarded the names to.
It sounds like we're just putting together, you know, why don't we?
Yeah, I don't know.
Why don't we make a motion to create the committee and then agree on who's on the committee by vote next time we have a meeting?
Well, that's what I thought we were doing. That's why, that's why I voted, I seconded.
I'm glad you picked up on that.
Excuse me, John, what do you, when you say create the committee, the charter created the committee. Two members from the selectmen are appointed by the selectmen.
I'm saying, why, let's open the committee.
We did. Last August, September, we opened up and advertised the vacancy. We got no responses. We had a vacancy on the finance committee. We had three people apply for that vacancy. One person was chosen and Jerry sent a letter to the two candidates that were not chosen suggesting that they consider being, uh, joining the bylaw review committee. No sooner had they received the letter, they reached right out to me and said yes.
That's fine with me.
So it's the board's pleasure. Do you want to appoint the two people that are on the recommendation sheet or wait?
I think we should wait because I know you're gonna have all the people saying that we're on the charter committee. That's what I'm afraid of. People who are on the original charter committee were just, who got voted in.
This is a bylaw committee.
I realize that, but our appointments I'm talking about. If someone was on the original charter committee that wants to go on, I would think we would like to see them and I don't need that.
Okay, let's wait till.
Yeah, it was, why is it a big rush? We're, we're three years overdue now.
Okay.
Well, I was just thinking that when you said that, John, because I'm thinking, I think we should just, let's reconvene the bylaw review committee. And, but let's act on this, give ourselves a date to act by.
I'm taking one right off. Who was very active in the check glaze, who was very active in the charter.
But when we advertised, Chuck didn't submit a letter of interest.
When did, I don't know.
Can we put a date so we, to act on this? Let's approve the reconven, to reconvene, can we put a date in which to act and accept?
We advertised in September 2016.
That's long done by the wayside though. That's, you know, you.
Let's do it at our next meeting. When is our next meeting?
If we approve the subcommittee, let's.
Next meeting's scheduled for 10 days from now. I would suggest that, I would suggest that you're not gonna get.
Too much activity.
Yeah, I mean, if you, either I'd say do these two or put it off for a long enough period of time. So if you want to do a new advertisement, you'd have people have an opportunity to respond to it.
I'm sure Sam is probably gonna write up some kind of story in this, right? So if.
There was no commitment.
The more we drag it out, the longer the story's gonna get.
No, I'm just saying.
Well, can we, can we pass on this until like two meetings from now? Give enough time to publish?
Whatever.
Okay.
And then this way, if anybody else is interested.
All right, I think you have a sense of the board.
They have two meetings.
Without the need to beat a dead horse.
I have no problem with the applicants, but it seems like.
Could, so to meet John's interest or concern this, could we post it and also maybe reach out specifically to any remaining living members of the charter review, original charter review committee, see if they're interested?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All set with me?
All set with you.
Thank you.
Nice stuff.
Thank you, Debbie.
Do we take care of this?
Ballot question? Yeah, we executed the ball, the ballot.
So just as.
Yeah, we had already agreed to include that question in when we got it by petition.
All right.
All right, 7:00 appointment. Uh, we asked Drew, Drew McManus is in to give us an update on the Upper Quashnet River and Bog Restoration Project. This is an advisory, you got 10 minutes on the agenda. I know you can talk about this for a long time.
More than enough time.
Okay.
Uh, do you all have the materials that?
Yes.
In front of you, should have a draft RFP, a map, a summary of kind of the history of events leading up to this point in time. Drew McManus, Town and Mashpee Conservation Agent and Herring Warden. So just as a ref.
I've seen you without waders in about two weeks.
I think I wear them to work in the morning now. Um, so just to bring the board up to speed, this is a restoration project in the Upper Quashnet River, which is the area of the river from the Quashnet Valley Golf Course on up north connecting to John's Pond. The history is, you have the summary of history of this site. It's a superfund cleanup site from the Air Force groundwater contamination plume cleanup. One of those, one of the aspects of the cleanup operation had an impact on the river. That was the construction of an earthen berm on top of Bog Pete. The berm subsided and it resulted in adverse impacts to the river, the flow, the temperature and the water quality, resulting in disruption to brook trout habitat and also a disruption to diadramus fish passage, namely river herring. So what we're doing is we've put together a draft RFP to send out to consultants to basically guide the commission through the process to address these issues. We don't know specifically what type of work is going to be done. We're looking, we had a study done back in 2007 for a river realignment scenario and that's kind of what we're leaning towards. Also, we want to do some wetland restoration of the now abandoned Quashnet Boggs. So the purpose of hiring a consultant is basically to, to help the commission make an ultimate decision about what sort of restoration scenario they want to see out there. The goals are specifically to improve diadramus fish passage and to improve brook trout habitat and overall water quality. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Uh, the Air Force, we've had numerous correspondence with the Air Force Civil Engineering Center. They have set aside funding for this project because they are basically responsible for the, the berm failure and fixing the river. And that figure is approximately $850,000. So none of this is coming out of the town coffers. This is all coming from Air Force funding. And whatever shortcomings we may have when it gets through the planning and permitting stage and to construction, we're hoping that grant funding will make up that difference. We're looking at as a basic general estimate about 1.1 million if it's a river realignment scenario, but again, we don't know if that's gonna be the final approach at this point. So that's the purpose of the consultant is to help us figure out what the best approach is in this area. That's basically it.
Questions from the board?
No.
I mean, it's a great ambitious project. I mean, basically what you're trying to do is get the water flowing again so it doesn't, so it's got pace and, and temperature.
Correct. Yep. Make it a nice sinuous stream channel. Like, right now it's basically in the middle and you can see it in that satellite image. You can see where the bog has been separated out and the river has widened in the middle of the bog. And that's really what, what's causing most of the impacts right now. It's, it's more like a slow-moving wetland swamp than a, than a river. So we want to return it to that condition.
All right. Very good.
One, one question.
Yeah.
Does the, do Mashpee residents have access to this bog and river once it establishes?
That, thank you for asking that because that is one other part of this is that we want to improve recreational access. Right now, I mean, the area is heavily gated because of the water treatment plant and so they want to, you know, keep people out of there and not interfere with that operation. It is winding down, but it's still gonna be another 10, 15 years before they pull out everything and they're finally out of there with the, with the cleanup project. But, um, yeah, right now the closest access is John's Pond Public Beach and the John's Pond Conservation Area. It can be accessed by the public from that location or just parking in front of any of the gates that we have around John's Pond Conservation Land. The only formal parking area is the John's Pond Public Beach.
Well, when you create a channel by stream, you're gonna reclaim some of that land area around the river that's.
Yes.
Wet and impossible to traverse.
Right. And we want, we really do want to open this up to the public. I mean, that's, that's definitely a major part of this is to, you know, once we finish up the restoration and figure out what we want to do out there, we want to make it much more, you know, a much more improvable situation for public access.
Drew, do you oversee this project with them as they go along?
Yes. Yeah. The commission is gonna ultimately make the decisions, but I'm guiding them through the process, so.
Drew, this has nothing to do with the, the poem that is showing detections of pollutants again, does it?
It's possibly. Uh, I spoke with the Rose Forbes, who's our liaison to the Air Force Civil Engineering Center, and they're kind of just in the beginning phases of figuring this out. They don't seem to think that this is gonna interfere with this restoration project. I did ask her specifically.
I'm thinking money-wise more than anything else.
It's, it's possible. That's the best answer I can give you right now because it's, it's kind of in its infancy stage as far as investigating the extent of that latest contaminative concern. So we'll wait and see what happens with.
Does the treatment facility that's currently there have the capa, the capability to take out PFOS?
Rose did indicate that they would probably end up using that same treatment plant. They may have to make some amendments to, you know, to let it function better for that kind of cleanup. But yeah, she did indicate they could probably use that existing. Cause they have detection wells there, so all the infrastructure is set up. It just may need to be, you know, tweaked for that particular contaminant.
But not very disruptive because you've already got the, the wells and the.
Right.
Treatment facility and the beds.
Correct. Yeah.
Tom, do you have another question?
Yeah, my, my question was because, and it may be best to leave it alone until it's established. But I was wondering, my thought was if they could shrink the fencing to around the filtration system and open it up a little bit from both sides of the, the bog area.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we certainly want to, like I said, it's, it's such a large area. There's so many entry points. It would be nice to have one established entry point for the public, parking, signage, you know, all of those things because it's a little bit chaotic.
That be part of the restoration plan that your consultants recommend?
What's that?
Can, can a public access component of it be part of the restoration plan?
Oh, absolutely.
One of the considerations that you asked them to do?
Yes, and that, that is part of, that's one of the major goals of this project is to improve.
Such a neat area down there.
Yeah, it's, it's beautiful. It's, it's a, it's an open palette and, and we really look forward to getting to that point where we can figure out what we want to do specifically out there and then open it up to the public.
Okay. If you need us, you don't need us to sanction the RFQ, do you?
Uh, if you wish, that's your call.
You can go ahead. Okay.
Yeah.
So a motion to endorse the issuance of the RFP.
May as well make it official.
Carol's second.
Carol's second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Last but not least, in response to a question Tom raised a couple of meetings ago, we asked our newly minted Permanent Director of Natural Resources, Rick York, to come in and give us an update on where the testing of the sediment quality beneath the aquaculture is and what he can tell us about where they are.
Right. So this is a special study that UMass Dartmouth SMass is doing on our water quality restoration and shellfish restoration project to give us some numbers on the removal of nitrogen by the shellfish and also by the oyster beds. I'll explain that in a minute, but as you know, the comprehensive watershed nitrogen management plan that was approved by the state and EPA has shellfish as a major component of water quality restoration. This was the first one approved by the EPA in the country actually with shellfish as a major component. And, and as you also know, that there's a searing component to that which would, could be increased or decreased based on how well the shellfish do. So this is a, this is a new, um, project. It's, it's been worked on before at various levels elsewhere at Chesapeake Bay. We started in 2004 with our oyster restoration in, in the Mashpee River. And so when we designed the, the plan and did the calculations, it turned out that all we had to do was restore shellfish. We didn't have to grow any extra shellfish that above what used to be there. It's just restoring them. They will filter out the algae that's growing on the excess nitrogen coming from the watershed and should solve the problem. There, there, and as I said, we have an example in the Mashpee River that's been effective for 10 years of harvest since 2006. We started harvesting those oysters and not only did we help stabilize water quality in the river, but we restored the oyster fishery for family fishing. So that's worked out well and, and this new plan is to expand that, as you know. So what we designed in for the oyster part of this, and the oysters are in the Mashpee River and in Shoestring Bay, those, those parts of the Papa Nessa Bay system that are most impacted. I designed that to take out half of the required nitrogen with, with oysters. So it's half of the reduction needed in theory to restore water quality. And the reason for that is that there's, the oysters, what's incorporated into the oyster shell and meat is only 10 to 30% of the amount of algae that they filter out. So we're being extremely conservative. We just reduce it to numbers that we can put real hard numbers on when we harvest the oysters. But the, the literature and the, the research is coming out pretty recently is that the stuff that, that they don't incorporate into shells and that they excrete goes into the water and most of it settles out on the bottom. And that's the, the sediment in the oyster bed, that enhances the, the microbes that take out the nitrogen. So they're there naturally removing nitrogen, but when you have an oyster bed, it gives them food to really take off and grow. And you can remove at least, at least equal to the amount of oysters nitrogen can be removed by the bacteria and other things in the bed. And it could even be a number of times that. And so we're being really conservative. And the idea is that if we grow half as many oysters as we need and the oyster beds do the rest of the cleanup, that completely cleans up the area and we have to do less searing. But in order to get some numbers on that, which is really what the DEP and EPA are looking for, you have to do the measurements because it's site-specific. And this is, this is a new area of research and we're starting to get more results from Cape Cod and elsewhere and it's site-specific. So we have this study that started last year and SMass has been doing more looking at the water itself, but they're also studying the nitrogen removed by the sediments in the oyster beds. And so they've completed all the data collection from last year and they're, they're analyzing that data. And it's a three-year study. This year coming up is gonna be intensive measurement of the sediment to see what kind of numbers we get. So not only will this help for the cleanup and it'll help for planning. So we don't, we don't have to wait till we find out the results in a few years. We can get some results now showing that we're actually removing more nitrogen than just with the oysters. So that's, that's the basic concept behind this. And I should say that this, this is our comprehensive plan. We have the, the town oyster project in the Mashpee River. The Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe got a $200,000, two-year grant from the EPA Healthy Communities Program to make the oyster beds in Shoestring Bay. And last year was the first year of that as well. So that's going on for a second year. The great thing about that is we get to try this without risking town funds. So that, the other, our other projects are well-established. We've been doing them for a while. The oyster bed restoration is a new one and so we have federal funds for the first couple of years of that. And then the hope, we're extremely conservative in our plan, but there's a chance that if we get enough oysters in the, in that area, they'll spawn and seed the whole bay and we won't have to do any more seeding and we can just manage it like they used to do in the old days. We're really just trying to get back to what it used to be like in the middle of the last century when you could just manage, manage the shellfish and they would sustain themselves. And we don't know if that will happen or not. We, we'll wait till we get to that point and see what happens.
So do you have any, so this year, the first year of the study was basically setting it up. And it's gonna be in this year that you're gonna start to get some information that's gonna.
Oh, no, they, they took data on this, they did sediment nitrogen flux, measuring the nitrogen coming out of the.
Do you have any initial?
They, they have all the data and they're working it up and they're gonna give us a technical report and you will get that and we can come in and talk about that again.
Into this spring?
Hopefully, yeah. It's sometime soon. They're.
Brian, right.
Yeah, so he just gave us an update on actually what they did and they did a lot of measurements and they've analyzed some of the data. And then he'll come in with full report and he comes in and gives us a report on a routine water quality monitoring too, as you know, that's been going on since the Estorays project started.
I think there would be great interest on the board when you get some of the initial results that you can summarize for us, if you come back and talk about it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Year two of the funding for this work is on this town meeting warrant.
That'd be great.
Anybody have any questions for Rick?
I just have one. Is Brian, Dr. Howes, who we're talking about, who's doing the measurements, is he also doing the Indian grant?
Oh, you mean the tribe's oyster farm?
Yeah. No, I'm talking about the new beds out there.
Shoestring. Okay, so, right, that's what I was talking about in the oyster bed restoration in Shoestring. That's under the EPA-funded project.
So Brian has nothing to do with that.
Um, he's taking some measurements out there as well.
Previously?
So, what's that?
Previously, before they, they established.
Well, just start, they, it started last year. 2016 was the first year of the oyster bed restoration project and the first year of this. So they did take measurements in that, in that area as well.
So they took baseline before the whole thing got started?
Yes, exactly.
That's what I meant, right.
Baseline.
Right.
Because it was just really small seed last year when they put it in and that's grown and then next year there's gonna be another, well, this year there's gonna be another seeding of that and then we'll see what happens.
Yeah. I, I have a couple of questions, but I've heard that the, the growth has been extraordinary out there, the, the oysters.
It's probably the best place in town for oysters.
So I, so I heard.
For the growth, they, they're growing really fast.
One of my questions, you kept saying management, to get into a management, what constitutes management of? management of the oysters or the shellfish? What's proper management? Is it reduction in the harvesting, or what?
Well, it's what you all have been doing for decades, actually, that selectmen are, by state law, are, make the decisions on the, the shellfishery, and things like the, the shellfish regulations, how much is harvested, we do supplemental seeding these days, so we do that, but, and so, and you have the power to close areas, to let them build up more, more shellfish, and so, but you have the Shellfish Commission, myself, and we, there's a lot, there's a lot of technical people that give input for that, so...
You being our advisors on, on any decisions that we would choose to make.
Absolutely, yeah, we, we'll give you all the information we've got, and we'll, we've been doing well so far, we just need to ramp this up to restore it more, and that's what we're doing, so...
So are we looking to allow more agriculture grants within the community, and...
That's on a case-by-case basis, we just put in one, as you know, that, and we, there's limited areas, so when people come to me with, looking for that, I give them the advice, and not all of them make it, as far as the hearing with you, they, you know, they drop out along the way. It's, there's not a lot of good area left out in our town, so...
But your, your plan didn't presume, the reductions that were called for in the nitrogen management plan presumed town-sponsored, not commercial operation?
No, actually, we included every kind of, every type of approach we could, and one of them is the tribe's oyster farm at Poncorn Point, which is different than their restoration project, so...
But each one of those that comes in lowers the town's investment requirement to achieve a certain amount.
Correct, yes, and, and I, way back, I thought we could just put all these oyster farms in and solve the problem, but it's not that easy, as you all know, having gone through it lately. So it turned out that fisheries restoration is, has more potential and is more practical, but we're doing both. We're doing everything we can and trying to make it really efficient, so...
Sounds good.
Without getting into the big things of what is, are the Cohogs comparable to the figures we're talking about now?
Yes, Cohogs are in our plan for, for the Waco Bay area, where it's, the EPA, when they, when they finally allowed us to write this in, they wanted a risk assessment and a cost-benefit analysis, and the reason we're putting oysters where we are in the Mashpee River and Shoestring Bay is the risks are lower, the diseases that wiped them out in the 80s don't affect them in these low, in these growth-limited areas.
The only reason I asked the question was, you know, I knew we were doing the Cohogs too, and I didn't know whether they were doing as successfully or at all.
Oh, very successfully, we, we planted about 5 million Cohogs last year, and we're going to, we're going to grow 10 million this year.
They complement one another, can you put Cohogs where oysters aren't suitable?
Well, we're met, we're, we're optimizing. I mean, you can grow oysters anywhere, but there's more risk, so with the experience that I have, and I've gotten with this town, we, we've cited this for the minimal risk, because this is a, I mean, we want the, we want this project to succeed, so...
Great project.
As do we.
Great project.
Thank you, Rick.